Right again. Good evening. Waving up there. Thank you for being here this evening. Obviously, this one's going to be an interesting one as we deal with kids and first timers and, you know, learning the ropes as we go along. It's a little bit more complicated by COVID and the masks and everything. You may notice that there is a lack of staff. Don't take that personally towards any of us up here. We suggested that the staff, because of the crowd we expected tonight, should watch from home. So they are tuned in and we certainly keep our best wishes that everyone stays safe. With that, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is January 11th, 2022, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to start with a short invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surrounding us with stewardship and a supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and grant the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Next, I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Sparani. Mike, thank you for your work and your assistance at these meetings. We will now move on to the swearing in of the elected officials. We will swear in the following. Peggy Lehner, that would be me, Mayor, term ending 12/31/25. I will be sworn in by former Mayor Don Patterson. Then Jackie Fisher, at large, term ending 12/31/25, to be sworn in by Mayor Peggy Lehner. Jill Hall, at large, term ending 12/31/25, to be sworn in by former U.S. Ambassador Tony Hall. After the swearing in ceremony, we're going to give everyone a chance to leave. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We do have 20 some resolutions on the docket today, so you might want to get out, but we'll give you an opportunity to leave if you are so moved. So we'll get started. Where is Mayor Patterson?
Right over there.
There he is. Didn't recognize you under that mask.
I like it like that.
Yes, we'll do it down here. And any family members who are present, we'd love to have you come down and join us for that. Jackie and Jill might be doing it a little bit differently, but I would like my family to join me, so.
My noisy one's going to be with me because he's noisy.
Yeah.
I got Jamie and Henry, the crazies. He's the one crazy, crazy.
This one just asked me how long it's going to take.
Oh, Steve, where do you want us?
Right there in front of the...
Yep.
Come on.
Are you ready? All right. Take it easy, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Peggy Lehner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Kettering.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Kettering.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties as a member, as mayor.
The duties as mayor.
Of the City of Kettering.
Of the City of Kettering.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, Doc. I really appreciate that. Before we move on, I just have to introduce my son Paul and Billy and Holly and Rizieh. She's one of them, so thank you. My daughter, Melissa Lehner, and Mary Lehner, and Mark Lehner, who right now is in the middle of teaching government, and it's interesting times, so I call him for advice when I'm probably not here. And last, what happens is my husband Jim.
Jimmy.
When we get to that, something's going to happen. I'll say, I'll say at the end, this is a reading, first reading, and you don't have to say.
Okay, great. But am I seconding your other ordinances or Jackie?
The resolutions I read, you'll be seconded.
Okay.
I'll second those. When you read, the resolutions you read, I'll second those.
But I'm skipping over Jackie.
I'll be moving over here after they, if we elect a Vice Mayor.
I.
I, Jackie Fisher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Kettering.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Kettering, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties as a member.
Discharge the duties as a member of the City Council. Discharge the duties as a member of the City Council.
Of the City of Kettering.
Of the City of Kettering.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
So help me God.
So help me God. And my daughter, Maggie. My husband, my husband said UD King.
Something's wrong with that.
Suckiness.
Great to see you all.
Good to see you, my friend. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
To Hall Smith.
To Hall Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Kettering.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Kettering, Ohio. And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties as a member.
Discharge the duties as a member of the City Council. Discharge the duties as a member of the City Council.
Of the City of Kettering.
Of the City of Kettering.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Except for that Ohio being on the wrong line, I think we got that one down pretty well.
I know, it was a little awkward. It's all good.
Okay. You all are free to leave at this point if you would like to, but there's some really fascinating resolutions coming up, so. But thank you very much for coming. I appreciate all the folks in the city of Dayton here, by the way.
Yeah.
You can stay if you want and talk at the end. Thank you so much.
Hey, Rep. Good seeing you, man.
Do you want me to remind you of that one for me? I will do that. I will absolutely.
They're not leaving there, Stacey Hall thing?
There's no way my daughter's going to stay.
He's just getting distracted by him.
Do I have to push this if I want to talk into the mic?
Always own if you don't want to be her internal.
Okay. Give him a second. Okay. Maybe a little noisy yet. Give him a second. Rick, you want to tell him to, as you walk out? They're not there at the ballgame. At this point, I would like to call on Tony Kleipas for a nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion and a nomination of Jackie Fisher to be our next Vice Mayor for the term ending December 31st, 2023. I move for that approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. The motion has been moved in second. It all in favor of signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Fisher.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will now hold a second while they change some name tags.
I'll move this behind us, sorry.
Flowers, balloons.
It's my birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. I didn't know that. At this point, I would like to accept a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2021 council meeting and workshop, Mrs. Fisher.
Your Honor, I have read the council meeting and workshop minutes for December the 14th, and I move for their approval as they are accurate.
Second.
The motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Ms. Hall? Please turn your mic on. Mr. Scott? Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We now have some appointments that I want to announce. Long-range planning, this is for council committees for 2022. Long-range planning commission, Mr. Duke, along with Ms. Hall. Intergovernmental Chairman with Mrs. Hall. Intergovernmental Interagency Relations, Mrs. Fisher, Chair, Mr. Kleipas. Community Relations and Promotions, Ms. Hall, Chair, Mrs. Fisher. Finance and Personnel, Mr. Kleipas, Chair, Ms. Duval. Public Health and Safety, Mr. Scott, Chair, Mr. Duke. Public Service, Ms. Duval, Chair, with Mr. Scott. Okay. We will now deal with proclamations, special presentations, et cetera. We have a few appointments this evening, and they are as follows. Sister City Committee, Al Follencamp, Robin Whitman, Bloom Beloved, Linda Hanhorst, all for terms ending 12/31/24. Board of Zoning Appeals, Pat Higgins, term ending 12/31/26. Planning Commission, Don Rethman, term ending 12/31/26. Personnel Board of Appeals, William Linisch, term ending 12/31/22. Volunteer Advisory Council, Jay Ellis, Chris Wright, for terms ending 12/31/24. Kettering Arts Council, Megan Weber, Megan Thomas, I mean, I'm sorry, Michael Weber, Megan Thomas, Pat Higgins, Christian Dalville, Sandra Donniger, Tracy McElfrish, for terms ending 12/31/23. Board of Community Relations, Kathy Spoggi, Tawana Jones, terms ending 12/31/24. Civil Service Commission, Jeffrey Mullins, term ending 12/31/26. Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Advisory Board, Shane Sullivan, Rob Leonard, terms ending 12/31/26. Board of Tax Review, William Forstofel, Cynthia Platt, terms ending 12/31/23. Board of Plumbers Registry, Ben Shannon, term ending 12/31/23. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as read?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been first and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none. We will move into public hearing, but before we do, I would just like to comment. I just read a long list of committees that average citizens have applied for and have committed to working on. This is one of the things that makes Kettering so strong, is we have so many people in this community who are willing to step forward and deal with everything from Volunteer Advisory Council to the Tax Board to, you heard the long list, and I commend everyone who has stepped up to the plate and offered to work for us, and thank you for doing that for the city. It's really important. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. I would like to move on to public comment on legislation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to any of the pieces of legislation that we are going to be looking at? Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Do we have anyone who wishes to address legislation this evening? Okay, seeing none? We will now move on to ordinances in second reading. There are no ordinances in second reading, so we will move on to the resolutions.
Your Honor?
Mrs. Fisher?
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency. The estimated cost and funds available is $91,816.88. It is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Schwederman, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for our revolving loan fund. This will be a five-year agreement where we will utilize the balance as previously mentioned, which is currently approximately $85,000, to use for housing rehab programs, as well as the current $190,000 in revolving loan receivables that can be programmed for housing rehab in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Okay, seeing none?
Call the roll.
Call the roll. Okay.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and administer a community housing improvement program grant from the Development Services Agency. The estimated cost is $250,000. The funds are available. It's requested by the Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize us to enter into a contract and accept funds from the Ohio Development Services Agency for a community housing improvement program grant. The estimated funds is $250,000 over a two-year cycle. The funding will be utilized for program administration, as well as down payment and closing cost assistance, and a new construction project with Habitat for Humanity. Again, the total estimate is $250,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for printing of city publications. This is being requested by the city manager's office. The estimated cost is $46,048.50. The amount budgeted is $37,900. I move for approval.
Yes, seconds.
Please call the roll. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, we left out Mr. Schwederman. Sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to receive quotes and enter into agreements for the printing of our contact with Kettering, as well as our resident guide. These five publications will be mailed to the community. Our estimated, or I'm sorry, our budget is $37,900. We have received quotes for $46,000. The overage of about $9,000 is related to the rising cost of paper. The city manager's office will monitor its budget throughout 2022, and if additional funds are needed, we'll come back to city council later in the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids and to contract for the 2022 curb sidewalk and drive approach repair program. The amount is $1,175,000, $70,000, and is requested by the Engineering Department. Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergsweuster, I believe, yeah, right there.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the 2022 curb sidewalk and drive approach repair program. This project includes concrete repair, deteriorating curbs, sidewalk, and drive approaches on several streets, including Brighton Road and surrounding streets, Ridgemore Avenue, Beulah Drive, Cantor Drive, Lisbon Street, South Aragon Avenue, Mini Court, East Aragon Avenue, Office Park Drive, and Isaac Prairie. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids and/or use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes in a contract for the 2022 street maintenance program. The estimated cost is $2551,000. The amount budgeted is $2551,000, and this is being requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergsweuster.
Thank you, Your Honor. A number of projects will be authorized under this resolution, and I'll briefly go through them. The first is our annual resurfacing program for an estimated cost of about $2 million. Included in that is $750,000 for the asphalt resurfacing general program, $275,000 for improvements to Spalding Road, $130,000 for improvements to Mad River Road, $740,000 under our state gas tax resurfacing program, and approximately $115,000 for improvements to Beaver Town Cemetery. Also included, under a separate contract, will be the $200,000 concrete repair program, a separate project of $291,000 for ADA curb ramp replacements, and $50,000 for a combination of our Miss Lehner's roadway program, and also our crack sealing program. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Bergsweuster? Okay. Seeing none? Call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids and to contract for the Ansel Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project, City Project Number 03947, ODOT Project MOT, Kettering Ansel Drive Bridge Rehab PID 111589. Estimated cost is $471,000. It is included in the budget, request for the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Let's see. Mr. Bergsweuster, I think, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to advertise for bids and contract for the Ansel Drive Bridge Rehab Project. The scope of this project includes basically a superstructure replacement of the Ansel Drive Bridge over a branch of Little Beaver Creek. The city was awarded $436,000 in ODOT Municipal, excuse me, ODOT Municipal Bridge Program Funds, and that will be offset by the total cost of $471,000 for the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
If you have any questions? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for writing of way acquisition services. The estimated cost and budgeted amount is $85,000, and is requested by the engineering department. Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergsstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to advertise for bids and contract for the Ansel Drive Bridge Rehab Project. The scope of this project includes basically a superstructure replacement of the Ansel Drive Bridge over a branch of Little Beaver Creek. The city was awarded $436,000 in ODOT Municipal, excuse me, ODOT Municipal Bridge Program Funds, and that will be offset by the total cost of $471,000 for the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for right-of-way acquisition services. The estimated cost and budgeted amount is $85,000, and is requested by the engineering department. Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergsstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to contract for right-of-way acquisition services for two federally funded projects that are coming up in the next couple of years. The first of which is a project on East David Road between Far Hills and Ackerman. It's basically a roadway rehabilitation resurfacing project, but it also will complete a missing link of sidewalk along the north side of David Road, and as well as a replacement of the traffic signal on East David and Ackerman. Funding for construction of this project is scheduled for 2024. Another project is the West Stroop Sidewalk Phase One Project from Overland Trail to Southmore Circle. This project will construct a new sidewalk along the north side of West Stroop Road between Overland and Southmore Circle. Funding is scheduled for 2024. Again, the construction funding for both these projects is 2024. This resolution will authorize the acquisition of right-of-way. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anyone have any questions of Mr. Bergsstresser? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeterman, back up.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to accept grant funding and execute the grant extension in the amount of $187,974 from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. This is a grant that the city originally received in 2018 to assist with playground installation at the Gentilly Park project. The grant is a 75% grant for $140,980. The city's local match is $46,994. And in Resolution Number 19, we will appropriate the funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sweeterman? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the purchase of fire uniforms and stationware in 2022. This is being requested by the Fire Department. The estimated cost is $35,000 and the amount budgeted is $35,000. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Sweeterman.
This resolution will allow us to spend $35,000 for fire uniforms and stationware.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sweeterman? Is that a question, Mr. Kleipass?
No, he signaled the mics wasn't on somewhere.
Okay. We all set? Okay. All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for Phase 1 landscape installation at Lincoln Park Civic Commons. The estimated amount budgeted is $95,000 and is requested by the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to seek quotes for the installation of landscaping improvements at Lincoln Park Civic Commons. The estimated cost is $95,000 for Phase 1 of this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sweeterman? Mr. Duke?
Mark, is this for additional landscaping in the park? Is it replacement of what we have or what are we adding in there?
This will be renovation and additional landscaping at the park. So it'll be basically improving the landscaping throughout Lincoln Park. This will be Phase 1. So this particular phase includes additional ground cover as well as the renovation of existing landscaping. So basically improving the look of the park.
Thank you.
Can I just comment? I think that's going to be a pretty hard challenge to improve the look of the park. It's gorgeous. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for landscape installation at Ridgeway Bridge. The estimated and budgeted costs are $175,000. This is being requested by the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sticking with the landscape theme, this would be a capital improvement project in our 2022 budget for the landscaping surrounding the area of the recently replaced Ridgeway Bridge. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sweeterman? If you hear none, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the removal and replacement of trees on city-owned properties. Estimated cost is $160,000. It is budgeted, requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another capital improvement budget item for 2022 and a continuation of several years of our tree replacement program. We're budgeting $160,000 for the removal and replacement of trees throughout our parks, city-owned lots, and median locations. It also funds the citizen tree planting program. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31 of 2022. The estimated cost is $937,774. Amount as budgeted is zero and it is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, and once more, Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The explanation for this supplemental appropriation for 2022 relates to a number of the resolution items that we've read already this evening. The first portion of this is $485,000 for the appropriation related to the economic development grants for Starwood Industries. We're also appropriating the $187,974 for the ODNR grant related to play equipment or playground installation at Gentilly Park. Additionally, we're supplemental appropriation for the carryover of Phase 1 funds for the Rosewood Arch Center project that were not expended in 2021, rolling those funds over to 2022. That is approximately $264,800. Your Honor, that's all I have for you on the supplemental appropriation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Sweeterman? Okay, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, that completes our ordinances in second reading. Resolutions in second reading. I will now call on Mr. Kleipass for an ordinance in first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have an ordinance this evening in its first reading to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the City of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on various streets in the City of Kettering, Ohio. The traffic control map and the traffic control file of the City of Kettering, Ohio are hereby amended to show no parking anytime west side of Flesher Avenue from Pauline Avenue southward for a total distance of approximately 200 feet. This ordinance is requested by the engineering departments in its first reading tonight.
Yeah, and I believe Mr. Bergstrasser is back.
I am, thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance will address on-street parking issues and difficulty for drivers maneuvering along this section of Flesher Avenue between Patterson Road and Pauline Avenue when vehicles park on both sides of the roadway. The proposed on-street parking prohibition in conjunction with the other ordinances already in place along Flesher will prohibit parking along the west side of Flesher for the entirety of the block from Patterson to Pauline. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, that concludes the reading of ordinances in first reading. We will now move to certifications and petitions. Ms. Kaczynski?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, great. We will then move on to the manager's report and community update. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few slides for you this evening for the community update. The first item is Christmas tree pickup. Our Rumpke contract calls for them to pick up your Christmas tree at your curb through January 15th. So we're in the last week of that collection. All trees should be placed at the curb and have no debris on them and should not be in plastic bags. If you miss your opportunity to take advantage of the curbside pickup, you can take your trees to the Montgomery County Solid Waste District on Encrate Lane to be recycled. The 2022 dog licenses program is up and running. Residents can purchase their dog license through our police department by contacting Shelley Davis at 296-3266. The deadline to purchase the dog license is January 31st. Our city administrative offices will be closed on Monday, January 17th, for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. There will be no delay in refuse and recycling pickup for the week as they will collect on that Monday. Your Honor, that's all I have for you for the community update. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. And is that the point in our agenda now where we will have any comments from people in the audience who would like to come speak before city council? If you wish to speak, I'd ask you to come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the city council tonight? Come on down to the podium. And once again, state your name and address.
Hello, my city. My name is Wesley Isaacs. My address is 2025 Pauline Avenue. You've just fixed the parking situation on Flesher Avenue from Pauline to Patterson. I knew you would because it was dangerous. What's going on that I'm here about is the outside live amp of fly music. It echoes and vibrates. That same block for hours is constant. Really wonder how it can happen in a neighborhood. That's it. I just would like the music to stay indoors and not outdoors, please. They're doing good right now. It's winter time. They still have their crowds. They're inside. But in the summer months, we can't even open windows. Neighbor's house vibrates. I don't get the vibration. I just get the loud echoes. So I just don't want to stop this until we can fix it. I mean, you guys can build a wall.
I know this is kind of a difficult and complicated issue.
I mean, I love the business, but patronize it.
Right, right. Multiple people are looking at it and attempting to fix, address all of these issues. And we will certainly stay on top of it. I don't know if...
It's just constant.
Right. I don't know if the city manager wants to comment on this.
I certainly can, Your Honor. As you mentioned, we did pass the... Well, I'm sorry, we read in first ordinance tonight the no parking, and that'll come back on January 25th for a second reading and a vote. And then if passed, that will make that permanent no parking. Where now currently, we have installed temporary no parking. And I know there's been some issues with that. Temporary signs seem to be relocated. I'll just call it that. So hopefully, we'll have better adherence once it becomes permanent. We also have an active case or project within our police department to continue to monitor the situation. And we will continue to do that. And we are aware, as you indicated, that come this spring, it will be back up and running. And we will be more active and less conversational.
We wouldn't even mind the Saturday and Sunday. You know, we could put up with it. But seven days a week?
During the week.
It's just tough.
Well, I appreciate your comments. And as I said, our police department will be active this spring at that location.
Okay. Like I said, I patronize the place.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We hope you don't need to come back again. But if you need to, we will love to see you. Thank you. We have another speaker? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan Kitter. I live at 4808 Laurel Land Drive, right here in Kettering. I've got two items I'd like to bring up in front of the council tonight. The first one being, on the 1st of January this year, a new law went into effect in Ohio, basically, where remote workers will be paying taxes based on where they live, not where they work. So if you used to work in Kettering and you're working remotely, you're paying taxes in that town. Now, what effect or what assumptions did the budget folks make in regard to their calendar year '22 budget, regard to revenue? How's it going to be affected by that law?
We are looking at that very closely and will continue to do so. This is one of the consequences of the COVID pandemic. And it is of great concern to the city and cities all across the country. So I appreciate you coming forth and sharing it.
Well, the question I have is what assumptions were made in regard to the '22 budget? Did you take money out? Did you put money in? What'd you do?
Yeah. Mark?
Your Honor, I can answer that question. But perhaps you mentioned you had other questions.
I have one other thing.
Why don't you ask all your questions?
All right, the second one has to do... Okay, the city council, I'd like the city council, please direct the city manager to direct the recreation department, this has to do with the pandemic in, to reinstitute the afternoon cleaning sessions in response to the pandemic. In addition, direct the rec department staff to enforce its wipe-down-the-equipment policy it has in both recreation facilities. And I know you use the facilities and you've seen that violation all the time. Yes, sir.
So let's start with the work-from-home questions. The 2022 budget does reflect adjustments for work from home. Essentially, we have limited our growth and income taxes for 2022 to zero. We determined through the calculations and estimates, which are strictly estimates because we've never been through this work-from-home situation before. But we anticipate the estimate to be roughly what we had anticipated in annual growth, which puts that number somewhere between $3 and $5 million impact. These refunds will start taking place almost immediately and run through the tax filing season, and then we'll certainly have a better handle on the number. But right now, the budget reflects that it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 to $5 million in refunds being issued that would not normally be issued. So that is included in our 2022 budget. The second question related to Parks and Rec. I have not had discussion with our Parks and Rec Act about re-implementing the additional cleaning. We do have regular cleaning. And then, as you mentioned, we do have a regular requirement for patrons, such as myself, that when I'm done with the equipment, I'm to wipe it down. I will mention to our staff that you're concerned that maybe not everybody is doing that.
I've mentioned to the staff numerous times, and it just falls on deaf ears.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Any help I can get on that, that's all.
I will mention it to them. But as you can imagine, it's difficult to...
Yep.
Be there at every moment as people move through the equipment during...
Nothing worse than getting on a sloppy machine, though, especially during a pandemic.
Understood.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come to the podium.
I'll be brief. I know you guys want to get out here and go home. My name is John Miller. I live at 1601 Flesher Avenue. First, I want to say congratulations to all the new council members and Madam Mayor, congratulations. One, I want to say, I know it was just the first reading, and you'll be having a second reading and a vote. I would ask you please to vote for the parking signs. As I drove, nobody was parking on the right-hand sign. There's an oncoming car. I was able to pass by very easily. So I would really advocate that you pass that. Second, about the noise issue, and I will be brief. I know someone already mentioned. There are some additional things. There's a neighbor I have that lives like two houses down and a street over. They'll be outside during the day, during the evenings in the summertime. They'll hear the bar playing their music outside. They then turn their music up even louder so they can drown out the bar. So there are secondary effects that happen, not just with the bar itself. It causes other people to be loud and noisy. And not trying to step on you. I work on Saturday mornings. I get up at 4:03 in the morning. So I would really love it if I could sleep at night. They usually stop around 11, and I can't go to bed until they stop. But like I said, I wanted to be brief. Thank you so much. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much for coming in. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none?
Nope.
Whoa, okay.
My name's Joy Lucas, and I live at 1529 Flesher Avenue. The bar situation, the parking, when they are pulling in off Patterson Road and parking the wrong direction, almost at the stop sign there. Plus, they just... You meet people coming out of the bar with people parked on both sides. Somebody's going to get hit. They park angle. You have your people DoorDash, people picking up deliveries. Even though it says no parking, they park there. And the signs just have been removed. There have been witnesses to them removing them, dumping them in the trash containers. They put them up within the same day. Half of them's down. It's just a dangerous place to come out or come in. We have people with children in their cars trying to turn off of Patterson Road. Half their car is out on Patterson Road because they're parking too close to the corner on Baker's side, which is a lot of entrance ways. But that don't make any difference. You park across entrance ways, too. But we just hope that you can help us get this situation taken care of. And yesterday, no, Sunday, I came up the street, and there was a car parked with its rear end out into the middle of the street. They don't even seem to know how to park.
Well, as you have heard tonight, we are paying a lot of attention to it. The... We expect things to continue here for a few weeks. But we're going to do the best we can. I don't know if Ms. Duval, that's your district. You wanted to comment on it?
I just want to say that I appreciate the residents who have been tireless in bringing these issues to our attention. Even while I was campaigning, I had learned about it from Joy. The neighborhood is doing a great job, and we are getting them resolved. Please continue to talk to us. Please continue to tell us what's going on. And we will... I can promise you that most people sitting up here drive by. They look, they watch. We are paying attention, and we are working on it, especially with Mark's help and the chief's help as well. So thank you all very much.
Anyone else want to comment on it? Okay, thank you very much. Now, do we have anyone else? I'm going to wait. Okay, I guess. I guess we're not quite done yet. Thank you. That will conclude our public comment portion of the council. I would now like to hear from members of the council if they have anything they'd like to report. And we will start with our vice mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. So I was honored to represent the mayor on the 16th of December. It seems like that was so long ago because we haven't had a meeting for a while at a ribbon-cutting for the Community Medical Services. It's a new organization that's coming into our community, a great opportunity to partner with our Police and Fire Department. And it's focused on taking care of our opioid crisis. And so what a great facility to have in our own front yard. Also, I mentioned Pollan Farms on Christmas Day. Fortunately or unfortunately, that crazy little boy that was here, I didn't get to see him on Christmas Day. Instead, my husband and I went to Pollan Farms, had a wonderful dinner, and then took all the leftover food and distributed it out to others that didn't have Christmas dinners. So much thanks to all of the volunteers that helped out that day. It was a good time. Met some other folks that happened to be in the same case that we were, that empty nesters. And everybody had a great time and got to sit on Santa's lap. So that was awesome. As far as swearing in today, thanks so much for the residents and their confidence in the reelection. And I am just honored and humbled to serve as the vice to our new mayor. And I'm very excited about this upcoming year with all this great new energy on the city council. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Kleipass.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. First of all, Happy New Year to all my colleagues, city staff, and residents of Kettering. We look forward to this year and I hope there's a lot of sunshine out there this year in regard to COVID and the pandemic that's going on. Do want to congratulate our new mayor, Peggy Lehner, our new council member Jill Hall, and congratulations to Jackie Fisher on her reelection and appointment as vice mayor this evening. And last, I want to add to the Christmas Day celebration at Pollan Farm. Jackie specifically mentioned all the volunteers that are over there. And what a great day for residents that didn't have somewhere to go on Christmas Day. But also to speak out for Bill and Marynell Bradley, who have been running that event for many years. And without their enthusiasm and support for that event, I'm sure it wouldn't take place, probably. Lastly, I'm adjusting my theme for this year a little bit. And my theme this year is going to be wear your mask, social distance, get your shots, and shop Kettering. That's it. Thank you.
It's a great idea to have a theme for the year. This is my first meeting as an elected official, and I'm so excited to be here and work with this group. I'm really humbled by the trust placed in me by the people who elected me and just thrilled to be here. And I want to thank my family and friends that were here earlier tonight who helped me so much and the amazing volunteers that helped me and who were part of this, really a big part of this. I want to mention that I was sworn in on my late brother's Bible. And it was the same book that was used by my dad, who swore me in the last time he took an oath of office. And I'm really grateful for the example that he gave me as a public servant that I hope to follow in. And I'm really grateful to be part of this historic Kettering City Council that is female majority. It's a rare thing. And having said that, I'm also thrilled to be working with some of the incumbent members as well. Yeah. And I look forward to doing great things together. We've already worked on... Obviously, we're getting to work on a lot of things. I'm excited about the projects ahead and the great work that's ahead of me this year. And this year, I'm certain that this group is going to move the needle forward on things like child hunger in Kettering, housing, transit, and jobs. And I look forward to the opportunity we have to build a better Kettering or to continue to make Kettering thrive for everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate Jill, Jackie, and Mayor Lehner on your swearing-in today. And simultaneously, with Mayor Lehner being sworn in, I received some news about a former Kettering resident and 2010 graduate of Fairmont High School. I'm proud to announce that Major Trent Schill and his wife Sarah, who's my youngest daughter, gave birth to a six-pound, 10-ounce baby boy.
While you were here?
While he was sworn in.
Oh, my goodness. Did they name her Peggy? Did they name her Peggy?
Well, it's a boy. No name yet.
Chipmunks, huh?
Yeah, that's cool.
Maybe it's a boy now.
Could be green.
Yeah, a six-pound, 10-ounce strapping boy to Major Trent and Sarah Schill, and I suspect this child would be either a future Air Force pilot, Division One athlete, or governor at some point.
That's great.
So first of all, congratulations, Grandpa.
Yeah, top that one.
Yeah, I can't top that at all, and I don't know what happened to my children while I've been here. So first of all, I would like to congratulate Mayor Lehner, Jackie on your swearing-in, and Jill, I'm so happy to be serving with all of you. The Dayton Daily News ran an article that we are historic, and I think that's pretty exciting. Nobody voted for us just because we're women, but it's pretty great to sit. With all due respect, Mr. Kleipass, Mr. Duke, and Mr. Scott, it's pretty exciting to be sitting up here with a little bit of a change of representation. This is exciting, and we're going to do great things. And again, I want to reiterate, this neighborhood over off Flesher Avenue, this is what you're supposed to do. You band together with your neighbors. You work together to solve a problem. You guys are doing great, and we promise to work with you and help solve this. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Obviously, congratulations to you, Peggy Lehner. You have a long tenure in this community, having served for eight years with you on council in the past, and now having you back as mayor is really, really neat, and I'm glad you're here. To Jackie, again, it's great to have you back in office. We had a good first four years, and I look forward to even more exciting things the next four. And Jill, you're starting a long legacy of public service in your community, continuing a long, a long legacy of public service, so congratulations to you. The article in the paper I thought was interesting. It said it was historic that we have four ladies on our council, and that is terrific, and that's new and exciting. I'm also excited because three of those four ladies are Kettering Leadership Academy graduates, which we started in 2003, and it's nice. It's nice, yeah, yeah, you know, the best class. And it's nice to see that that's coming to fruition, and all that talent that we, hopefully we trained, is going to serve our community well. I do want to share just a couple of sad notes since we met last. Two folks that were really active community servants passed away, and I just want to mention them. Sue Ellen Besch. Sue Ellen was a dedicated community volunteer to this community that really threw herself into the arts in Kettering, a tireless servant for public art and all kinds of art projects. And she was known, frankly, as the happy lady. Every time you spent any time with Sue Ellen, you walked away with a smile on your face, one of those folks that could light up a room, and she will be missed. And then also passed away over the Christmas holidays was our long-serving, long-term clerk of council, Jean Shulkey. I had the privilege of working with Jean. She was our clerk of council from 1982 to 2005. And some of you in the audience might remember Jean if you've lived in town for many years. I see a nod there, yeah. So she was a very special person, really enjoyed singing in the adult choir after she retired. But while she was our clerk, she was a great clerk and served as the president of the Ohio Clerks Association, which is quite an honor for any clerk, and especially we were honored to have her serve in that capacity. Jean was just an amazing clerk, a delightful woman to be around, and we mourn her passing. That's all I have, Your Honor. I do support Tony's new pledge for this year. Tony, that's great. Wear those masks, folks, please, especially now. It is so critical that we do our best to try to knock this thing out as quickly as we can. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. I get to go last. When I ran for mayor, I thought we were going to be very much in the throes of recovery. Was very concerned about some of the impacts that COVID isolation has had, particularly on our young people, and was looking forward to digging in and working on some of those issues along with other things like restoring our volunteer program, putting the phrase back into a full, full summer program agenda, and other things like that. And instead, we find ourselves still very much in the grips of something over which we have very little control, other than to wear our masks, to get vaccinated, and to socially distance whenever we can. But that doesn't mean that we don't have a lot of work to do to recover from where we are and continue, continue to push to be the kind of community that we know this could be. We need each other. Each and every one of us need each other, and there's never been a time where people are more divided and more skeptical of their neighbors. And I just have one, one thing I want to leave with you tonight, and that's that we have got to pull together, respect each other, respect each other's differences. We can have differences of opinions, but at the end, what we have to agree on is that we're going to hold hands together, and we're going to bring this community back to where it was before we were struck by this curse. We can do it. I have no doubts we can do it. I think we've got the leadership to do it. We've got a great group of people, men, women, whatever. We're going to work together. We're of different political parties. We're different sexes. We're as different as you could be, and I think that that strength that we gain through those differences is what's going to make us be successful. So I am honored to serve as your mayor. It's going to have its challenges. I'm well aware of those. But I served 11 years, actually, with you, Bruce, before, it was 11 years, before I left for the state, served in the state, first the House of Representatives and then the Senate for 12 years. And I could not be happier to be back here, working with the folks in the city of Kettering. The state was an interesting experience. I don't regret having it, but it has really shown me what happens when we are not working together, where our concern is more to point out our differences than it is to work together to unify us. And we don't need to be like that in Kettering, and I have no intention of being the kind of mayor that tolerates that sort of behavior. So thank you for electing me. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve. And with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting unless I get told there's something else I'm supposed to do first. Our next scheduled meeting. Where would I be without her? Our next scheduled, there's no further business, come before City Council. Our next regular scheduled council meeting will be January 25th, 2022, and this meeting is adjourned. Hit the gavel to close the meeting. Thank you.